Good morning, we now call this city council meeting to order. As we call the city council meeting to order, if you have a cell phone, we ask that you put it on silent, mute, or off at this time. We'll be led in prayer by Madam Clerk followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk.
Oh God almighty, wisdom and justice, through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted and judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Here.
Morgan.
Present.
West.
Present.
Roots.
Present.
Mayor Kirkland.
Present. Move for the approval of minutes?
Don't move.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. You now open the microphone up for public comments. If you have any public comments, we'd like as you step to the microphone, give your name, uh, your address, and the public comments are, the public comments are addressed to the, uh, agenda items only.
Yes, good morning. Olivia Smith, nine thirty East Eighteenth Street. As I look at your resolutions, I just wanted to know if you could explain to me what is the Adopt a Park program?
Either.
Adopt a Park program is a, I guess revised initiative that the city is starting to connect businesses, nonprofits, schools, sororities, any legal entity with the city of Chester. Uh, the agreement between the city of Chester and that entity would be at a minimum to do three cleanups in the park or playground. The objective is to get some assistance from community members, businesses, to help our Public Works Department maintain our parks.
Okay, does that include tree trimming and, uh, fallen trees and so forth? I know you can't, well, you could be asking, but for nonprofit to pick it up, but to, yeah.
It certainly could, but.
It could, but it's not necessarily a part of the Adopt a Park program?
Uh, the memorandum of understanding does not include tree trimming, but it does at a minimum, uh, have three cleanups throughout the year. So if someone adopts the park and sees that trees are an issue, that can certainly, you know, be addressed with, you know, between us and that entity. If you're speaking of the trees that you brought to our attention a few weeks ago, I'll just let you know that myself and the Shade Tree Commission did go out to Washington Park. We looked at all the trees out there. There was one in particular that's right on the, I'd say close to the sidewalk at the address that you had mentioned. It appears to be dead. It's leaning sort of toward the street. One of the issues that the tree expert had was identifying the tree. And it can't completely be identified until the leaves come out, but we did identify one tree that appears to be dead and we're trying to find some way to, uh, get funds to cut it down as far as the limbs that are spread out throughout the park. Um, there are a couple of options that we're going to address to get rid of them. One of them would be to bring our chipper out and just mulch them and take the chips and lay them out as, as a cushion to the playgrounds. Another is to get the Solid Waste Authority to allow us to bring compost out to incinerate a road. Apparently Chester and SWA doesn't work together there. So I just say all that to say that we have been out there to your area. And, uh, we did see one tree that was definitely dead right on that sidewalk. And the tree branches, some of them big, some of them small, not just in Washington Park, but, you know, all throughout the city. We're trying to arrange some way to get them either chipped and use the wood chips or just put them on a back of a truck and take them out, uh, to incinerate a road to get rid of.
Okay, well, since you brought that up, um, and you said you're just waiting for the leaves to come, wouldn't it be better to do it before the leaves come because, because it's easy to, to, um, moat versus having leaves and have extra, extra stuff to deal? That's just.
Yeah, I understand. And I feel the same way. Like if there's ever a time to cut down a tree, it's when it doesn't have leaves on it. I'm not saying they're waiting for the leaves to come in full bloom. We were just trying to identify, is the tree truly dead? Will it bloom at all? So that will be in the next couple of weeks, you know, based on, you know, Mother Nature. So if we see nothing coming out, we know it's completely dead. But it's, you know, that's just part one. The bigger part is making the arrangements to finding the money, to getting the people to get the job done.
Okay.
So believe me, it's, of all the trees that are down in the city, Washington Park, because you brought it to our attention, is the first one on our list. So.
Okay, thank you.
I'll continue to give you updates as they come up.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Good morning, myself.
Talk through this gas mask. What is the, uh, PCD for the city's mentoring initiative? You have a submission of extension request to PCCD for the city's mentoring program. What is, what is it? That's your question.
We have a, um, a grant, a state grant with DCD. Uh, it's a PCCD grant for violence mentoring initiatives throughout the city of Chester. I think this is the AMACHI, the AMACHI program, although the city of Chester has. The, uh, grant expiration date is coming near, uh, I believe at the end of this month, maybe. So we're just, uh, we're requesting an extension to, I believe, June, uh, this year. I think, I believe it's June. Uh, so we're requesting the extension of the grant. Uh, the grant was, uh, initially funded in twenty nineteen, I believe, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And because of the pandemic, a lot of the funds weren't able to be exhausted throughout the, uh, the term or the length of the grant. So we're asking for an extension for the PCCD grant.
It's almost like it died during the pandemic. Of course, we're still in it, really. Okay, uh, I have another question to reference to the, what is the, uh, annual action plan? When was it done and where is it? And has the public been exposed to it? It's a three-way question.
Yes. So, uh, on an annual basis, the city of Chester, uh, receives federal funding for a community development block grant, CDBG grants, uh, uh, for community initiatives, um, nonprofits, or for program, programs throughout the city of Chester. So, uh, this was something that was initially, uh, we had a public hearing, I believe in December. Then we had a second public hearing in February, uh, livestreamed it as well. Um, we had, um, individuals and/or businesses and/or, uh, nonprofits submit an application requesting for funding for a particular program, a project that they had. Um, and at this point, it's, uh, it's before Mayor and Council to consider the, uh, action plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So this is something that we do annually, um, just approving a budget of, uh, for the allocations of the projects.
Okay, I do understand that. In fact, I wasn't sure that that's what this was. Cause I hadn't heard of any thing, but that may be because I'm old and I'm staying in the house that much. Maybe, okay, when you get eighty, another, you'll realize what I'm talking about if you make it there. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trump. Seeing or hearing any other public comments on our agenda items. Before we go any further, I want to recognize a fine gentleman and, uh, newly elected councilperson in Delaware County Council, um, and a friend, um, of all of us, uh, Councilman Richard Womack. Good morning, good morning, Mr. Trump. I see you have a speech in your hand. Come on.
One I can cut in ahead. Let me say good morning to everyone, um, to your esteemed Mayor, Mayor Kirkland, and council members. It's an honor for me to be here with you today, cause it's not a sad occasion. You know, it's, to me, it's a happy occasion and we always want to see about how we can get back into our communities in the county. So today I want to tell you a little bit about what we would like to do. The Delaware County Interactive Gaming Revenue Authority, which is known as DACA, was established by County Council to distribute some of the Commonwealth's tax revenue that we receive from Harris. So we like to give it back into our county, back into our communities. So several causes, several clauses, including our first responders today. You are among thirteen emergency services who would be, will be receiving some fundings that will come back to them. We have given out over twenty-six thousand dollars this month. This grant is to reimburse the City of Chester Police Department for its community outreach that they have done for your summer fair last year. So having said that, on behalf of Commissioner Stephen Greske, on behalf of County Council, I would like to present to you today a check for twenty-five hundred dollars to your police department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Santa Claus.
I just want to say thank you, uh, Councilman, and thank you to everyone who gave me donations to make the first annual cares fair a success. I've been told that I'm the only police commissioner in the city of Chester that had what are slides on Seventh Street. This check is going back into our fund. We raised three thousand dollars already for our next event and we're gonna make another one successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Councilman. Um, those, those funds are well deserved and well used when it comes to our young people and, um, it is our way of reaching back out to our community by way of our police, uh, officers and firefighters and engaging them in a, in a very positive way. So we want to thank you. At this time, we're going to go right into our resolutions.
Resolution, whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Gladys Peterson, thirty twenty-one West Tim Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. Number two, Jaclyn Cooper, eight thirty-four East Fourteenth Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. Number three, Angela Riley, nine twenty-eight Edward Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. Number four, Aretha Ferguson, thirty-three zero-two West Thirteenth Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. Number five, Otto D. Fontaine, seven ten Wilson Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. Number six, Marilyn Anderson, one nineteen West Mallory Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. And number seven, Cardrina Manning, two nineteen East Twenty-second Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. Whereas after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined the aforementioned individuals have met all of the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the three thousand block of West Tim Street, in the eight hundred block of East Fourteenth Street, in the nine hundred block of Edward Street, in the thirty-three hundred block of West Thirteenth Street, in the seven hundred block of Wilson Street, in the one hundred block of West Mallory Street, and in the two hundred block of East Twenty-second Street in the city of Chester.
I second. Are there any questions?
Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city official to prepare the advertisement notice for a third-party payroll service provider for the city of Chester. Further, that it does hereby authorize the city clerk and/or other proper city officials to advertise said notice.
I second. Are there any questions?
Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the City of Chester owns and operates and maintains a system of public parks. And whereas Chester City Council is committed to providing clean, safe, and an aesthetically pleasing environment for children to play and residents to participate in recreational and social activities. And whereas in an effort to strengthen the desire, excuse me, this desire, it has been determined there is a need to revise the city's Adopt a Park program. And whereas the program's purpose is to increase community involvement in preserving the city's system of public parks through general upkeep and cleanup. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the revised City of Chester Adopt a Park program, which is designed to provide the public with an opportunity to be a part of the city's commitment to preserving our public park system. Further, this program shall take effect immediately upon the passage of this resolution.
I second. Are there any questions?
Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the submission of a project modification to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, PCCD, sub grant number two thousand eighteen dash SS dash zero-two dash three zero-five-nine-three for the Chester Mentoring Violence Prevention Initiative to extend the project ending date from March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Further, that it does hereby ratify the execution of all the necessary documents for and on behalf of the City of Chester.
I second. Are there any questions?
Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas under Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended, the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development is authorized to extend financial assistance to communities in a prevention and elimination of slums or urban blight, carry out activities which will benefit low and moderate income persons, or address other urgent community development needs. And whereas under the Home Program created by the National Affordable Housing Act of nineteen ninety as amended, the Secretary of HUD is authorized to extend financial assistance to participating jurisdictions to expand the supply of decent, safe, sanitary, and affordable housing. And whereas the City of Chester anticipate that its fiscal year twenty twenty-two Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program allocation will be approximately one million, two hundred eighty thousand dollars. And its Home Investment Partnerships Program, home allocation, will be approximately three hundred sixty thousand dollars. And whereas the City of Chester, in collaboration with the Chester Economic Development Authority, has prepared a draft annual action plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, which proposes how the entitlement grant funds will be expended to address the housing and community development needs identified in the city's five-year consolidated plan. And whereas a draft of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two annual actual plan was on public display from February first, twenty twenty-two through March fourth, twenty twenty-two, and the city held a series of public meetings and hearings on this said plan. And the comments of various agencies, groups, and residents were taken into consideration in the preparation of the final document. And whereas additional recommendations from the mayor and city council were also taken into consideration in the preparation of the final document. And whereas after taking all comments and requests into consideration, the mayor and city council have incorporated the following revisions to the draft fiscal year twenty twenty-two annual action plan. Number one, delete the purchase of a police vehicle in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Two, add the following public service activities. A, Salvation Army Chester Corps, in the amount of ten thousand dollars for case management services to support the stepping stone program. B, make in a change group in the amount of ten thousand dollars for program management services to support the Connected Visions Initiative. C, increase the contingencies line item from sixteen thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars to fifty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars to fund project overruns. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, Section One, that the annual action plan for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, CDBG and Home Programs is hereby in all respects approved and the city clerk is hereby directed to file a copy of said annual action plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-two with the official minutes of this meeting of this council. Section Two, that the City Council of the City of Chester is cognizant of the conditions that are imposed in the undertaking and carrying out of the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnerships Program with federal financial assistance under Title One, including those related to, number one, the relocation of site occupants. Two, the prohibition of discrimination because of race, color, age, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national organ. And number three, other assurances as set forth under the certifications. Section Three, that the mayor of the City of Chester, on behalf of City Council, is authorized to file an application for financial assistance with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development upon HUD's notification of the funding allocations that will be made available for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, CDBG program and Home Program. And Section Four, that the mayor, on behalf of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, is authorized to provide assurances and/or certifications as required by the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended, and any other supplemental or revised data which the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development may request in review of the city's application.
Don't move.
I second. Are there any questions?
Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the Department of Accounts and Finance to refund the stated amount to Brenda Savage, which represents a refund for the overpayment of twenty twenty rubbish taxes for the following property. Two thousand West Second Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen, which is a vacant lot in the amount of four hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I second. Are there any questions?
Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill Number Two, first reading was on March ninth, twenty twenty-two. Ordnance Number Two of twenty twenty-two, an ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Chester, Pennsylvania.
I move that we pass Bill Number Two on its last and final reading.
I second that we pass Bill Number Two on its last and final reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Before we go into our public comments of a presentation, presentation by Councilwoman Williams.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
And citizens of Chester. I had the opportunity to honor somebody that helped our city out for over forty years, educating our children. Ms. Shelton.
They would, they would call that, they would call that child abuse today, Ms. Shelton.
Uh, Ms. Shelton, you had a little lady in your classroom and her name was Felicia Majors. And she was my daughter. We were talking the other night and she stated how determined you were to make students in and there your classroom learn. And today, she's an ICU nurse. Going to be working at Temple Univers, Temple Hospital. And she could ask me to come here and bring this to you and say, thank you. Thank you so very much for encouraging her and helping her to get a good education so that she could be where she is today. So thank you, Ms. Shelton. Her mom thanks you. And I know right now the world thanks her because she's been all over the country fighting the virus. And it is real. So thank you, Ms. Shelton, from Felicia Majors and Elizabeth Williams and from the citizens and council in the city of Chester. Thank you.
Oh, thank the Lord. Thank you. I can't, oh my, listen. You know I love teaching. I love my children and I wanted them to learn. Oh, all of them. I started at Old Franklin School. It's now torn down. Uh, the church is there. But I was the third black teacher. And we had just started to integrate. Then it became practically all black. And do you know that we got the books that were from Weatherford? All torn and tattered. I was a reading teacher. And I had, I had forty-five, forty-eight children in my classroom. No, eight, you know, no extra help. We had a gym teacher. And I sometimes art. That's all. And we taught, my classroom for my reading was in the basement, the cold bin of Old Franklin School. Because there were so many children, there was no other space. And they would, we went on. Thank God for those who marched and wanted our children to have a better place. Old family branch, this goes way back. And I remember they closed the school and my husband took me home and I was upset. Where are we gonna teach? Do you know, that was like on a Friday. When we went back on Monday, we thought we were in heaven. We could see. We didn't know that we'd been teaching in the dark. They put in fluorescent lights and we thought it was heaven. They put in new toilets in the children's bathrooms. They were all white and shiny. We'd never seen nothing like that before. And you know, it's just important for everybody to keep up with the news and to, whatever's going on, just to keep up. I ended my career at Chester High School, Oak Columbus School, which is now closed, just about everything. But anyway, I still love my children. And I tell you about our children, they're not all bad and criminals. I remember one evening, I was sitting in uh, Chinese store, you know, I used to go get uh shrimp fried rice on Friday night. And these boys came into the store. And they looked kinda funny. I kinda tightened up on my pocketbook, but I didn't move. And it looked like he was getting ready to do something and he turned around. And I said, Ms. Shelton, you, you're pretty as ever. I said, no, I'm not. I'm old now. But he calmed down and walked out. Do you know it was because I had that child in class? And when you are, you can be strict, but good to the children, teach them and they respect you years on. You don't have to be a teacher. You can be a neighbor, a Sunday school person. Just show the children some love. Let them know what it's all about and you'll be surprised. Look, I didn't come here, I come here today to honor Susan Dennis. And Lord have mercy. Thank you, thank you. Just keep it up.
Thank you, Ms. Shel- Ms. Shelton, Ms. Shelton came from that, came from that era where there were no spoiled children. For the word says there, there was not one spoiled child in the classroom simply because they did not spare the ride during that time, so. Before, before we, yeah, we'll, we'll, let's do our, let's do, we're gonna do our, uh, COVID update first and then we'll hear from Mr. Ms. King.
Since the start of the pandemic, the city of Chester has had six thousand seven hundred and eighty-two positive reported COVID cases. There were only four positive cases reported last week. This represents a consistent downward trend in the number of positive COVID cases in the city. Regarding vaccines, we only, we currently have sixty-two percent of Chester residents partially vaccinated and fifty-three percent are fully vaccinated. The school age population is up to thirty-four percent partially vaccinated and twenty-eight percent fully vaccinated. In response to the recent decline in the number of positive COVID cases in the county, the CD, in the country, I'm sorry, the CDC has defined three distinct community levels to guide decision-making regarding mask protocols. The levels can be low, medium, or high and are determined by looking at the hospital beds being used, hospital admissions, and the total number of new COVID-nineteen cases in an area. The Delaware County area is currently in the low or green category, which means masking is not required except on public transportation in airports and in healthcare settings. Just a reminder that COVID PCR testing is available at Everest Urgent Care and Keystone First. Vaccines and booster shots are available at Chespen, Keystone First Wellness Center, Everest Urgent Care, and your local pharmacy. For more information, please go to chestercovidinfo dot O R G. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Any comments or questions, Ms. King? Um, we're getting there. We're not quite there yet, but we're getting there. So we're asking that our residents continue to get vaccinated. Uh, it's, it's important, it's important so we can get back to some sense of normalcy. Thank you, Ms. King. Yes, Mr. Shelton. Right now, we're, we're putting it out up on our, our Facebook page, the city's Facebook page. Uh, we're putting it out in our newsletter. And the website. So we're, we're, we're getting it out there. And we're, we're, we're doing, we were doing meetings, sometimes weekly meetings or bi-weekly meetings. With a group of, of healthcare providers to, you know, kinda update each other and the community. Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Mr. Hurst. This is Mr. Charlie Hurst from Delcora. Delcora was here the other day, provided us with a presentation and he wanted to come. And I apologize for not being able to be in the presence on that day. I was a little under the weather messing with my grandkids.
I understand. Glad you're feeling better. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. Um, here for three reasons really. Number one, thank you for having us on Monday night. Um, it was an important step, I think, in being able to communicate, um, the plan that's in front of council. Number two, um, on behalf of Bob Willard and, and all of Delcora, he's, he's not able to be here today because of a funeral he had to attend. He apologizes. But as he summarized at the end, we have a very firm commitment, um, to deal with our odor problem um, and, and improve our communications. Number three, um, happy to, uh, several of you were there, several listened in. Um, happy to answer any additional questions or receive any additional comments you have on the content that you heard from Monday night. Again, thank you for having us.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hurst. And, and, um, the, we will continue the dialogue and we will, we will continue working together to see how.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Feel free to reach out to Mr. Either yourself or Mr. Solicitor, reach out directly to Mr. Willard to continue the dialogue. Very good. Thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Yeah, one thing, I got some exciting news. Um, we were supposed to kick off the explorers program. It's kind of like what the Boy Scouts do. Uh, we did get confirmation that join the club ages ten to thir- uh, age will be between ten and thirteen and the post ages are between fourteen and twenty-one. Open house is March twenty-ninth at six P M. At Fire Headquarters on Providence Avenue. If you look for more information, you can email firefighter Kevin Postlewait at K P O at P O S T L E W A I T at chesterfire dot net for the open house.
Could you say that, say that again?
For his email?
Yes.
K P O S T L E W A I T at chesterfire dot net. We're gonna post this on our social media page too. So if you're on our social media page, it'll be on there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we open up the microphones for public comments. If you have a public comment, we actually, you go to the microphone. You would state your name, your address, and your public comments at this time.
Good morning. Uh, I am J.C. Malakel, eleven eighty-one East Ninth Street, um, acting as guess you will call community liaison for those who could not be here today.
Excuse me, East Ninth Street, you in Chester?
I am not in Chester.
I'm sorry.
So I can't be a community liaison for those who are working, who cannot make the council meeting today, who have questions.
You're a community liaison for Chester?
Yes.
But you don't live in Chester?
Correct.
No, ma'am.
All right then. I will, uh, remember that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel.
Good morning.
My name's Harry Crawford. I live at thirty-three fifteen Carter Lane. Uh, one I'd like to say, uh, Portia, thank you for in turn getting, uh, the potholes fixed. They're not all the way fixed, but it's, it's, it's a lot better than in turn fault instead of a hole. Okay, uh, Mayor, I'd like to thank you again for the substation that's at the in turn the old hospital, Sycro Hospital. Haven't seen that much of a improvement in, of them riding through our area, but it, but at least it's, it's a start. Uh, last, um, the question I have is that when people come into Chester and, uh, and actually buy property, does the, does the city of Chester try to find out what they plan to actually build there? Then, then to ask the actual neighborhood what they actually, what they actually think of it? Whether they actually want it there and there or not?
Yes, yes, Mr. Crawford. They have to go through our planning, uh, department and our zoning, uh, departments. Um, and they have to present to them exactly what they're, what they plan on placing at that residency. Um, sometimes in the past, we found out that folks have said one thing and done another and we've had to take legal action. During this pandemic period, persons have taken advantage of that because they knew that the courts were closed. But we do have a process in place. They have to go through zoning, they have to go through planning. And if they, um, falsify information about what they're actually gonna do with the property, then, you know, they're automatically are denied. So they have to, yes, and they, and they should, we encourage them if they don't say what they're trying to do in the area. Uh, the city will try to put out information to say what they were attempting to do in their area. For example, if it was, if they're trying to put a, some type of group home there and they were saying the, something else, um, we would, and if they're denied, we would encourage the residents to kinda be our eyes and our ears and look out for us and let us know if that, if they were still going on with those plans.
Has the, um, with the past management of some time ago, I had, I had talked to, um, the, the council as, as about getting speed bumps on, on certain streets. But the comment has always been, well, we are, we are afraid of being, uh, actually sued for damage to, to people's cars. But if there's a sign up there saying, speed bump ahead, um, I think that actually takes, takes care of that problem because if they fly over it, that's their problem. Has, has Chester thought more about in areas in which people are complaining about speeding to, to actually, to actually put up speed bumps?
My, my city, our city engineer is, is not here, but we have considered, uh, the request of many of our residents about speed bumps. And there's a lot that goes into that. We would, uh, uh, kind of refer that question or information come to the, to the engineer. One of the things that we do know, that once you place speed bumps in place, um, you have to be mindful of the fire apparatus and the police apparatus coming through those areas. Um, if fire trucks are coming through, that's gonna slow their progress. Uh, and might even damage the truck. But in some areas, we are looking at, uh, the possibility of, of those speed bumps.
Last but not least, um, in Manchester High, uh, 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 on Ninth Street, why are there no school flashing signs there saying fifteen miles an hour?
There, there are, there's a flashing sign. It's not in front of the school. It's nearer to these arts, what's it called? Cusa. It's nearer to Cusa, uh, the flashing, the flashing signs. Um, and in the, at, when, when we're letting out, we have a number of police officers that assist in the school. Um, when the kids are exiting the school at two-thirty.
Okay. Maybe is that, uh, I'm not there at around two-thirty, but if you go to any of the other, any of the other neighborhoods, the s- signs are right at the school, police officers are, 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 are right in the area to help safeguard our kids.
Well, there, there, there are some schools that have, um, other help, I'll say, helping, helping with the crossing of our kids. They're not police officers at every school. We wish we had that many officers that we can cover every school.
Okay.
Uh, unfortunately, we do not, um, um, the biggest acts for officer support is at our high school. Um, and so we wanna make sure that we have them there. We've been, uh, we've been contacted by, uh, the superintendent and the receiver, uh, asking for our assistance at the high school and we have done so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And on those state roads like West Ninth Street, East Thirteen, you have to get, um, authorization too from, um, FND, you know, as to whether or not they'll put those, you know, flashing lights there and make sure that they meet their compliances and what have you. But we have been in discussions, like the mayor said, with others to see about getting a flashing light there.
Okay. Last thing I'd like to ask you, Portia, is that, um, to, does the highway department actually ride around and actually, and actually fill potholes on, on a, on a regular basis?
Um, we do have a schedule, Mr. Alexander.
Okay, uh, we have holes on, 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 uh, our street, uh, Carter Lane. And, and, and then also holes on, in front of the, um, uh, well, it used to be the A and P M. Uh, uh, there, in turn Fifteenth Street, Township Line Road. That had, that, that been there for a couple of years or more.
Right. We've been talking with, uh, because I think at a certain point, some of that belongs to, is it Chichester Trainer? Okay. And, um, so we have to, we've been talking with others to get them to own up to their portion of where those potholes are. Cause I think they're a little past the A and P or eight, that gas station, they're a little past there.
But there is a sign there right at the light saying Chester, saying Chester.
Okay, well, I'll have to check that out. But then also, that's a state road as well.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
It's just, you know, talking and partnering with others to see what we can do to get those potholes fixed. But of course, those potholes that we're responsible for, like around on your street and what have you, we can look into that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Crawford. Ms. Shelton.
I'd like to ask also on potholes, there's three big ones on East Eighteenth Street from Providence up to Crosby, Topper Hill, which school, which I left from the, the old school. There's three big ones. Spinning building. And they put stones and stuff in it before, but they come through there so fast, like when they get loose, they kick, kicks them out. And even fill from time to time, they've been filled over three years. And it needs it desperately. If you come through there twenty miles an hour, it should tag your friend in out of your car. Which is not bad for those fools that still coming through there crazy with bigger holes. But we'd like to get them fixed as soon as we can get some repair. And I understand that we had to get some tar and some money to get some stuff in it for them. I understand all that. As soon as we put that on the board.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. And this has been a very difficult, I, 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 uh, sure, sure. I, 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 one second, Ma'am.
Once, once. Once, once, one second, Mark, after the mayor.
I I was just gonna, thank you, councilman. I was uh I was just gonna say that um it's been a um this has been like pothole hell. Not just here, but uh I stopped driving in Philly and and other areas. Uh I mean, it's just, this has just been one of those years that's been like pothole hell. And uh everybody, everybody in every community uh is kind of reaching out. So uh we we understand. I just had to deal with some a rim bending of a rim. Uh and it's it becomes costly. So um our our guys are out there um day in, day out. And unfortunately, they only last but so long. Hopefully, hopefully, some of these streets that we're talking about will be on our list as we prepare entire roadways uh in the upcoming season.
And also, I'd say thank you what for what they do. They can only do with what they can get. Can't fill it, they can't get the material. And that's been some of the problems. So we understand all of that. Just wanted to put that on the sheet.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Pottle and.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Council, my name is Roxanne Johnson, and I'm from R and R Paradise over on eight eighteen Wall Street. Um we're coming up on our first year anniversary here in Chester. And we are having cake on that Sunday, not this Sunday, but the following Sunday um as our first year anniversary. So we invite council and the mayor out, mayor and the council, excuse me, and on the community out for cake for um our first year anniversary from two o'clock to four o'clock next Sunday at the ballroom there. Also, um not sure how to do this, so um seeking guidance. But the second Saturday in August, we wanna do a bookbag giveaway for the kids to go back to school. Um we wanna serve at least two hundred children um with bookbags fully loaded um for them to go back to school. Um we wanted to do like a block party or something like that, but I know that we are on a block with other banquet halls. So I'm not sure how we would do that if we had a um if we're even permitted to do a um block party there with um bouncers and a DJ with some music and some hot dogs to give back. So if somebody could try to give me some guidance if I can do it or not, we'll just take it inside the ballroom. But I did wanna do something to give back to the community, me and Ronald.
The, first of all, um what kind of cake you have?
I know, we have different kinds of cakes. We're gonna have strawberry shortcake and um we're gonna have chocolate and vanilla. So we have different varieties.
Gotta get the first things first.
That's right.
As far as as far as a block party, it would probably have to be something uh done in conjunction with the other businesses there because because they have businesses on the block.
Yeah.
Um if they are in support of the block party and being able to shut down the block, then we would, we could be supportive of it. If it if it's something that interrupts their business at that time.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure.
Yeah, we definitely don't wanna do that. Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. Alright, thank you. And I'll also reach out to the other banquet halls on that area. Alright, appreciate you. Thank you.
Can you, where where's the the event at for the first year anniversary? It was next Sunday. Where's this at?
Eight eighteen Wall Street at the R and R Paradise Banquet Hall.
Gotcha.
We just wanted to say.
Strawberry shortcake, chocolate cake.
Vanilla cake. Yep, yep. Hope to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um seeing the one of us at the mic, before I prepared, I wanna make sure that we, that the um public knows that we're gonna have an executive session concerned dealing with a legal matter right after the close of council meeting today. Are there any que- uh comments, questions from members of council?
I I have a comment. Um I just wanna remind the uh community that the regular tra- our trash vendor JP Mascara is still um they're out doing their cleanup for the month of March, and they have um different zones that they're doing where they're just going through your area and cleaning up everything that they see. Um beginning on April fourth, that's when the trash vendor will begin picking up on your particular trash day. If your trash day is Monday, then you are allowed to put out one bulk trash piece. If you're putting out a mattress in a bulk uh box spring, that's that's fine, the two pieces, but they have to be wrapped. But other than that, you have to put out one bulk item per week. And if you go on, I believe it's the city's website, uh Amanda, you will see the items that you can put out, items that they will pick up, and items that they cannot pick up. The regular bulk trash picked up by the city of Chester will be um certain appliances, televisions, things that may have like Freon in it, things like that. But um we will continue to pick that up, and you can call into the city. I wanna thank the Chester community too for um coming out, really coming out on Monday uh to hear the presentation from Del Cora. Um I thought it was a great back and forth exchange between the community and Del Cora. You had an opportunity to hear from our community members as to what some of their concerns are. So I just wanna thank you, community of Chester, for coming out and supporting that meeting. Um also, it was reported to me this morning um an incident where um some children um are in trouble. And I just wanna say, um I don't wanna go into anything deep, but if you know of any children that you feel are being um mistreated in any way, there is a hotline that you can call to report those items. Um you know, some of our children don't have the best of lives at home, and some, we have some kids who are raising their siblings. Um but there is a child hotline that you can call, and that's one eight hundred nine three two zero three one three. I got a report uh this morning about some children being left alone at night and not being fed properly. Um and and their um condition is squalor, you know. So uh we have to make sure that we're listening out in our communities. We're, we wanna make sure that our children not only are properly educated, but they have to be safe in their homes too. So um I want you to know that I, well, I'm asking the community to be um aware of your surroundings and the children that live near you. Oh, if they want more information, if you want more information about trash, you can go to chestercity.com. Under the department tab and click streets. Okay, that's for additional information regarding the trash. Thank you, Amanda. The child hotline is one eight hundred nine three two zero three one three. I feel as um elected officials, we have a responsibility to inform you about some of those things that are happening to our children, and uh we have to be there for them. If their parents are not gonna be there, we have to be there for them.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman?
Good morning. I think she's reading my notes, because I also wanted to thank the community for coming out to the Del Cora uh listening session. It was great to see this room filled to the gills. I think the most impactful comment came at the end by ironically Mrs. Shelton when she said, "Come on, community. We've got to come to city council meetings, to these hearings, to the school board meetings, to zoning meetings, to planning meetings, to redevelopment meetings. The community has to get involved. And if there was ever an example of it being done right, it was uh whatever night of the week that was, Monday night, this past Monday night." Uh two other things real quick. The illustrious, Richard Womack is here from Delaware County Council. He gave a check today to our Chester City Police Department from an organization called Delaware County Interactive Revenue Gaming Authority. That's a mouthful. The acronym is DASIGRA. I just want everyone to know that five other checks have come to the city of Chester uh from that organization. They were for five thousand dollars each, and I'll just name them all because there hasn't been a public uh announcement, so to speak. Making a Change Group, the CAT Center, East Side Ministries, Chester Upland Soccer Club, and the Boys and Girls Club of Chester have all received funds. And as the mayor said, as as Councilman Womack said, this money specifically comes from the casino, from Harrah's. There was a law put in place that all interactive gaming, that's this internet gaming, sports betting, all that, one percent of the revenue gets sent to Delaware County to spread across the county. So what the county did for us is to create an authority to make the decisions where the money goes. Uh if I had a little more time, I'd I'd read you the mission statement, but that's, you're gonna see a lot of that money rolling right back into this community in the future. And lastly, I just wanna thank the mayor and council for approving the uh Adopt a Park program. This is a great opportunity for businesses and all people in the city to join with us and city government to help keep our parks and playgrounds nice. Uh I don't think it's, it's happening too often, but if you have a park or playground in your area, I don't think it's, I don't think we've knocked on your door and asked you, "What would you like to see?" Or, "What would you like to change?" Or, "What would like to add?" Or, "What activities would you like to see?" That's specifically what this is about, as well as helping our public works uh group have a little help out there. It won't embarrass anybody. It won't, we won't be stepping on anybody's toes by doing so. And for all these businesses around town who who talk a good game, Mayor, you know who they are. We wanna help the city. Well, here's your opportunity. You can adopt a park and help us upgrade the playground equipment and get our swimming pool open on time and put in a skate park and clean up the 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 trees and and branches. Uh I just wanna name a few people. Jabari Jones was a big help. Ken Schuster, Janelle Brown from the Solicitor Solicitor's Office uh were a big help in putting this together. And I I have to say, there's a couple organizations that are already, have already adopted our parks. One of them being Labor's Local Four Thirteen. They take care of Crozier Park down there. They they get those baseball fields looking nice every time that they have the uh Jackie Robinson League, which they're looking to bring back this summer. And a little secret place up there on the hill, the Nether Providence Athletic Association, who've been maintaining that soccer field for the last dozen years. I was surprised to see that they have put hundreds of thousands of dollars to keep that soccer facility really nice. And that's on Chester property. So we're gonna get into a formal arrangement with them. It's kind of been ignored for a long time. But those are two examples of of entities that have already adopted some of our parks and and talking to some organizations in and out of town. They're really looking forward to joining forces with the city and helping us uh improve these public spaces, particularly for our children, our young people, and even our seniors for recreation purposes. Um I I can't say all that without saying, again, I wanna thank County Council, Richard Womack's here. I can uh thank him specifically. In their last council meeting, they approved two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars or something real close to that to upgrade uh DeShong Park. Not so much an upgrade, but there has to be some some cleanup going on for insurance purposes. So you're gonna see new sidewalks. They're gonna clean that whole space, some areas around the museum. If nothing else, it's gonna be a much more pleasant place to be this summer. And they think you kicked in a little money to keep the grass cut like you did last summer. So we appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman, I'm councilman. Um before you came on council, um there were a few playgrounds that were uh revitalized and new playground equipment was um purchased and what have you. That was the playground, it was a new playground put in at Eighth and Lloyd Street, and then a new playground put up in the um Highland Gardens area. And we did have an opportunity to, uh the Parks Department under Councilwoman Williams, um they went out and they uh solicited the input from the community and what have you. And that's how we got those new uh playgrounds there. And of course, I know you're going around looking at um repairing, you know, some of the equipment that maybe has been broken and what have you. But I do want you to know that we did have that going on before you got here.
Let me respond to that real quick, and thanks for reminding me of that. Also, in that administration of uh Councilman Williams, the work was being started for two new playgrounds that we'll be cutting a ribbon on really soon. And they're both kind of hidden. One of them's in the Holy City section of 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 the city. It's all the way at the end of the street. You make a left turn. If you go down there, there's brand, it's brand new. It's it's done. It's constructed. I think that it's being enjoyed right now. The other one is on um Pendle Street, like Ninth and Pendle. You have to literally go behind the houses to see it, but these are brand new um playground sets with swings and things kids can climb on. It's bright, it's shiny. That's what we wanna do all across the city. Add beautification, upgrade our equipment, put out some flowers, put up a nice sign, get the water, spray things done. It's gonna be a lot of fun. So we wanna thank uh Council Lady Williams for the work in getting those new playgrounds out. And I made sure I included her when we do the ribbon cutting, cause that's your work, not mine.
Thank you. Well, you know what they say, you know what they say? The saying is, "Let the work I've done speak for me."
Next we'll be passing a plate. Thank you, thank you, Councilperson. Thanks so very much. And let me just, let me just chime in on the uh Adopt a Park program. Please, 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 let me just speak to the community at large on Facebook. Um when you invest in your community, you and you invest your time and your effort into supporting programs like our Adopt a Park program, it means that you're committed to making sure um that our parks are are kept properly. Um it just troubles my heart um when someone drives by one of our parks and throws a uh KFC box down when we don't even have a KFC in the city. It bothers me when um Chick-fil-A bags are in our parks when we don't have a Chick-fil-A. And so we're bringing stuff into our community and um kind of trashing our community. Let's uplift our community. Let's support the Adopt a Park program. Um we, I'm hoping that the churches are listening as well. Um come on out and be a part of that. This is gonna be a great program. I think that um we have some beautiful parks here in the city of Chester. And if we invest our time and our energy in those parks and that effort, um that this will be a great program. It will be a positive program. It will be a shining light in the city of Chester. Um I do wanna thank uh Mr. Hurst, Charlie, Charlie and Bob for you being here on the other day and presenting to the community um the desires of of Del Cora. Um I'm gonna say this, um cause folks go back and forth with this. The Vant and Del Cora are here in the city of Chester. And there comes a time where you have to find out how to work with those entities that are within your community. It's, you know, it's amazing how some folks say, they'll pick them up and throw them out the door. If life was that easy, if life was that easy. So how do we work with, some people say with the hand that you've been dealt? And how do you make sure that your city gets the proper investment that it definitely needs with with the proper environmental safeguards? So it, that happens by way of conversation. That happens by way of dialogue. That happens by way of commitment. That happens by way of folks coming together and saying, how do we do things better? And so I appreciate the folks being here, I think appreciate Del Cora being here, and I appreciate the the uh opportunity. That we have before us to continue these conversations and listening to our Del Cora has heard. The concerns of our community and our community has heard uh the desires of Del Cora, and we're gonna keep talking. Because when folks stop talking, that's when problems happen, so we're gonna keep those conversations going. I do wanna share with you this, we're going to have a legal meeting, we did have a um. Legal uh. What is it called, the the court case, that had been presented by the receiver and his team. Um and we are going to talk about that, um see me with a smile on my face. And um we're gonna talk about that when we go into our executive session. Um uh and we will present it the same way, we're gonna present it to the public. The same way the receiver and his team presented it to the public, cause we think you need to know everything. And so we're gonna do it the exact same way, so that you know everything. Um prayers should, prayers continue to go out for the folks of Ukraine. What is, you know, we 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 have our little spats over here and, you know, think that we're going through something. But to see people, countries, communities displaced and destroyed. And babies having to hide in bunkers and and in. And simply losing their lives for no real reason, um is is painful, so so keep them in, keep them in prayer. Keep them in prayer, um folks don't know how close we are. About to be involved in a nuclear war. Keep them in prayer. Um special prayers go out for the troopers who lost their lives on uh ninety-five. Those troopers happened to be involved here in the city of Chester at one point. And um you know, you never know, uh I have an older brother. Who had three brothers who were in law enforcement, and when they walked out the door, you never knew. You never knew if they were gonna come back home, and so these officers, these troopers, these persons who. Dedicated their lives to protecting, to serving and protecting, lost their lives on that highway and we have to keep, lift them up in prayer. Lift their families up in prayer as well, and also, also pray for that young lady, because her life is forever changed. Forever changed, because of, because of, I'll say it, an act of stupidity. Forever changed, so but and most most importantly, keep their their families up in prayer, we 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 lift them up. And um with that said. We're gonna go into executive session, have a great day, this meeting is now adjourned.